All right. What's your motive? Number two. We're going to be in Matthew, chapter nineteen, to start us out this evening. Gospel of Matthew, chapter nineteen. And we're going to be reading verses sixteen to twenty-six. So Matthew nineteen. Beginning at verse sixteen. Down to verse twenty-six. We'll read. I'll pray and then we'll get into this evening's sermon. Matthew, chapter nineteen, beginning at verse sixteen. And behold, one came and said unto him, Good master, what good things shall I do that I may have eternal life? And he said unto him, Why callst thou me good? There is none good but one, that is God. But if thou wilt enter into life, keep the commandments. He saith unto him, Witch! Really? Jesus said, Thou shalt do no murder; thou shalt not commit adultery; thou shalt not steal; thou shalt not bear false witness; honor thy father and thy mother; and thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. The young man saith unto him, All these things have I kept from my youth up; what lack I yet? Jesus saith unto him, If thou wilt be perfect, go and sell that thou hast, and give to the poor, and thou shalt have treasure in heaven; and come and follow Me. But when the young man heard that saying, he went away sorrowful, for he had great possessions. Then said Jesus unto his disciples, Verily I say unto you that a rich man shall hardly enter into the kingdom of heaven; and again I say unto you, It is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter into the kingdom of God. When his disciples heard it, they were exceedingly amazed, saying, Who then can be saved? But Jesus beheld them and said unto them, With men this is impossible; but with God all things are possible. Heavenly Father, Lord, I pray and ask for your help. Lord, as it says here, with you all things are possible. Lord, and... In order for this message, Lord, to accomplish your will and your purpose in your end, Lord, I need you. I need you. Lord, I'm thankful for my weaknesses. I am thankful, Lord, for my struggles. I'm thankful, Lord, for my faults. Lord, because it causes me to come to you. Lord, not count on myself. I have no confidence, Lord, in the flesh, but in you and you alone. So I pray, Lord, let you be glorified tonight in all that's said and done, and let these, Lord, your sheep, Lord, hear your words. And we pray and ask for it in Christ's name. Amen. In the story of Cain and Abel, we have many lessons contained there in it. In relation to our topic of these meetings, what's your motive? We see two hugely different motives in how Cain behaves himself towards the Lord as opposed to how his brother Abel behaves himself towards the Lord. Now, these messages are not directed towards the lost, but at the redeemed. So I'm not going to be addressing these two men from that perspective, as I often have done when I talk about Cain and Abel. So don't dismiss what's said in this message because you believe it's to show the lost how to get saved by turning from their selfish, self-centered, self-gratifying, and self-worshipping works in order to receive the gift of salvation by faith in Jesus Christ. They are directed at you, the born-again believer, whose selfish, self-centered, self-gratifying, and self-worshipping motives need to be repented of. So that they are doing all the things in the correct frame of mind for the glory of the Lord, for the right motive. You know, this little example here in Matthew that I used here about this young man, before we get into the meat of the message, is a good example. He was doing everything right, how it looked on the surface. You notice that the commandments, when he says witch, you know, really? How about all of them, right? But geez, okay, all right, you want to go that route, you know, thou shalt do no murder; don't commit adultery; don't steal; don't bear false witness; honor thy father and thy mother; love thy... All things that can be seen by people around you. And that's why he was doing it, to be seen. That was his motive. Soon as the Lord, then he said, Well, what more do I, you know, what do I lack? You know? And then Christ said, Okay, sell everything you've got. He got them where his heart was. Lay up treasure in heaven, come and follow Me. And he went away sorrowful. And that's why Christ tells him, you know. How, and you'll notice, interestingly, verse twenty-three, it says, you know, that a rich man shall hardly enter into the kingdom of heaven. Okay, that's the literal, physical kingdom. Then in the very next verse, he said, you know, again, I say, it's easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter into the kingdom of God. That's the spirit. Both kingdoms, he said. You know, if you're counting on your wealth, counting on your possessions, counting on your money, it's about motive, not... Okay, what you do is important. But what's behind what you do is important. Because if the motive's wrong, like I said last night, you stand before the Lord, okay, at his judgment throne, that's how things are going to be measured. What was the intent of your heart? What was your motive for why? Yeah, that's why I said, boy, there's going to be a lot of surprises. There's going to be a lot of folks there at that judgment seat coming up saying, Give it to me, they ain't going to give it to them. All right. Because they think because, yeah, I did this, and I did that, and I did this, and I did that. But what was your motive behind what you did? The Lord gave Adam and Eve a very graphic example of what would be required in order to be able to stand righteous before Him. That's Genesis three twenty-one. It wasn't a pretty picture. Genesis three twenty-one, to Adam also, and to his wife, did the Lord God make coats of skins and cloth on them. Like I said last night, Adam didn't understand what death was. He didn't understand what was going to happen when he died spiritually. He had no idea what was going to happen when he died mortally. They'd never seen death before. And then God, in order to cover their nakedness, kills two lambs, skins them out, and makes them put those skins on their body. That verse has eighteen words in it, in our English language. Three times six. Yeah, there's a great big coincidence, huh? Six, six, six. Sixty-seven letters in our English language. Not a particularly long verse, but man, is it full of eternal impact. Now, if we read verses seven and eight in that same chapter, Genesis three, says, And the eyes of them both were open, and they knew that they were naked; and they sewed fig leaves together, and made themselves aprons; and they heard the voice of the Lord God walking in the garden in the cool of the day. Normally, Adam would have got excited, because he was used to walking with God and having that fellowship. And Adam and his wife hid themselves from the presence of God amongst the trees of the garden. I guess they figured with the fig leaves, that camouflage. Can't see me. They knew they were in the wrong. They knew that they had sinned. And they attempted to cover their naked bodies with fig leaves made into aprons, and we've discussed this many times, because now they were ashamed of their nakedness. Again, apron doesn't cover much, if that's all you've got. I mean, I talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I mean, would you wear, just wear an apron out in public? Now, most folks wouldn't, I... Yeah, there are some folks out there that would probably do that. I mean, well, that picture in my mind. Would you do that in public? Would you come into church? I'd throw you right back out. See? Some believers make excuses for their location and activity to justify running around with only what an apron might cover, more or less, and believe it's still okay. I'm going down to Virginia Beach, so I'm going to run around in something less than my underwear. Really? Really? Fig leaves in the Bible spiritually represent religion and works. Religion and works for righteousness. Both false believers as well as fruitless believers. Remember the parable there, Christ has come to Jerusalem just before his crucifixion. They spent the night out sleeping in the garden to get seminarian, and coming back down in, and he sees a fig tree with leaves on it. Of course, this is in the springtime. And, you know, a fig tree with leaves is supposed to have figs on it. So he goes, thinking he's going to get breakfast. It's got nothing on it. He curses the fig tree. It looks like a fig tree that's supposed to have fruit. It ain't got no fruit. An awful lot of folks out there who act like they're a fig tree with fruit on it, but they got no fruit. Know them by their fruits. So who do have fruits, they're fruitier than a lot of them. He curses it, and it withers up and it dies. And the thing is, your fake, selfish, self-centered, self-gratifying, self-worshipping motives done so that you appear to have fruit might fear men or fool men. They don't fool God one bit. Now, the Lord had showed Adam and Eve what the real cost would be when he killed two innocent lambs. Lambs that Adam and Eve probably had petted and cuddled, loved on. And stripped those hides off them and to cover their bodies. And God did this with his own two hands, made coats of skin to cover their sinful nakedness. God showed them that what they had fashioned, their fig-leaf aprons with their own labors, was totally insufficient to fulfill his requirement to pay for and to cover for their sin. And their blood and death, okay, was what was required, that or of an innocent substitute. No bunch of fig leaves going to be able to do that for you. It required the life's blood. Lamb of God that taketh away the sin of the world. That was harsh. That was harsh, but it was necessary. It was a necessary act so as to firmly establish in the hearts of Adam and Eve the horrible cost of sin. And we talked about this, like I said, a couple of weeks ago. Coat covers a whole lot more than an apron does. And spiritually, it covers a whole lot more than that little apron is going to do. That's God's standard. If you have an issue with God's standard, take it up with Him. I'm preaching what the Bible says to Bible believers, or folks that say that they are. And this is exactly what Adam and Eve passed on to their two sons, Cain and Abel. I'm sure they explained quite clearly to them what had transpired, and what had happened, and what the scenario was. And this is what you have to do. We go over to Genesis, chapter four, verses one and two, and it says, Adam knew Eve his wife, and she conceived, and bare Cain, and said, I have gotten a man from the Lord; and she again bears his brother Abel; and Abel was a keeper of sheep; but Cain was a tiller of the ground. Okay, the cattle were to serve men. I talked about this last night. This was their, the curse that got put on them, was to have to serve men. While the cursed earth required so much toil and sweat, remember, what got put on Adam, that curse there, in order to get it to yield the fruits and vegetables that man needed to consume to survive. Abel raised intended sheep, the animals that the Lord required to be offered up as an innocent blood sacrifice in order to be found righteous before Him. Abel's heart was towards God, and his motive was right. Well, if we've got to have these sheep in order to offer them up as a sacrifice to God, as a temporary covering for our sin until the promised seed comes, then that's what I'm going to make my life work in, is raising up these sheep so that we have them. Because that's what God wants. That was his mind, that was his motive. He understood exactly what God required, and he made sure that he was accomplishing exactly that. And Abel made his sheep available to everyone so that they too could make the proper offering that God required. And the skins of those sacrificed sheep were taken and made into coats to cover up the nakedness of those that had offered them up as well. Okay, you didn't get born with a suit of clothes, did you? Okay, the wool, you know, I don't know how long it took them for they figured out how to take that wool and spin it and weave it and what, you know. But they knew about taking the skins right away and made covering. Now Cain, on the other hand, Cain in his own self-wisdom decided that the Lord ought to recognize and reward all his efforts in struggling with and conquering the cursed earth in order to provide food for himself and for others. I was doing a good thing, nothing wrong with that. Farming, going to grow some fruits and vegetables. Okay, they were told how, you know, when we were in the garden, boys, we could just go and pick this stuff, and it was there, we didn't have to do much of anything. Well, now, we got to work for it to get it. We like eating it, we need it, okay, but there's going to have to be some sweat and labor if put in to have it. Problem here was Cain's motive. Cain's motive, all that he did had not one thing to do with the glory of God, not at all. It didn't have one thing to do with receiving God's imputed righteousness from an innocent substitute. Cain believed he was owed by God, God's blessings, and being given the standing of being righteous before the Lord due to all of his labors in the cursed earth. God said, I'm not having it. That's not what I told you. I told you, yeah, you're going to struggle, you're going to sweat, you're going from the Garden of Eden to the Garden of Wheat. That's the way it is. You want that okra, you want them greens, and you want them collards, and you're going to have to sweat for it. Yeah, that's all there is to it. But when it comes to standing righteous before me, I better see some blood. I better see the blood. When I see the blood, when I see the blood, when I see the blood, I will pass, I will pass over you. That's God's requirement. He's not looking for, you know, watermelon rind and seeds. He's not looking for any of that stuff. But Cain, Cain's their man, I got to labor anyway, so I'll labor extra hard. And I'll overcome this cursed earth and produce amazing quality and quantity of fruits and vegetables out of this cursed ground. In spite of your curse, look at all that I have done. I deserve to be blessed. I deserve to be found righteous before you. Are you not pleased with all my labors? Are you not pleased with the fruit that I have produced? Genesis four, five says, But unto Cain and to his offering he, God had not respect; and Cain was very wroth, and his countenance fell. Verses six and seven. And the Lord said unto Cain, Why art thou wroth, and why is thy countenance fallen, if thou doest well? So another he's saying, What you did wasn't well. Shallst thou not be accepted; and if thou doest not well, sinuliest at the door, your brother's sheep that he's offered to you; and unto thee shall be his desire, and thou shalt rule over him. Okay, that was the curse laid on the cattle. Was to be servants of men and to be used of men for this. And here is where the destruction and the division between believers comes in. Motive. Motive. Abel's number one priority in life was the glory of God. He feared God. He knew. He knew who he is and what he was capable of. He respected the Lord and wanted to please Him. He loved the Lord and desired His presence, His fellowship, His love. And the only way to fulfill and to obtain that was to obey what God had said to do. Not because then the Lord owed Abel anything, but because it was the only way, the only way, to be righteous before God and to be accepted by Him. It was the glory of God and His presence and His fellowship that Abel desired. And so, I'm going to do what God's asked, because I want Him. I want Him to be pleased with me. I want Him to accept me. I want to be able to be in God's presence, and this is what he said is required, and so this is what I'm going to do. And we read about how he brought his offering there before God, and fire came down from heaven, from God, and consumed the offering. That was the sign that it had been accepted by God. And so, being obedient to God was for Abel simple and logical, because it was the only way to live as far as Abel was concerned. Nothing else mattered. Nothing else mattered. That wasn't the case with his brother Cain. Cain desired God's righteousness. He desired God's presence. He desired God's blessings. He desired God's power on his life to enrich his own self. What can I get from God? That was his motive. What can I get from God? For Cain, the Lord was a means to his own ends, and not the end in and of itself. The Lord is the end of all things. The Lord is the end of every purpose. The Lord is the end of our existence, Him. Not, what can God do for me? What can God give to me to make my life what I want it to be? But what can I do with this life that God has given to me to give glory to Him? And this is the problem with so very many believers, and always has been. Always has been. They view the Lord as a means to their own mortal, temporal ends. This life, this life, what I'm going to get out of this life. And the whole point behind this life is it's a pilgrimage. It's a preparation for the life to come. And we're supposed to be striving to be as much like what our eventual existence is going to be as we can while still saddled with mortal flesh. That's not how Cain saw it. And that's not how most believers see it. Their Christianity is a veneer that only goes as deep as their own selfish, self-centered wants. I'll do it as long as it's going to get me what I want. And that's how deep it goes. And that's how deep it goes. If it's veneered, that's not very deep at all. Neither the Lord nor the life to come holds any more value to them than what can be squeezed out of them in the here and now for their own selfish, self-centered, self-satisfying, and self-worshipping motives.